Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Board Wrap-Up Show for November 2015. We're going to talk with Dr. Pennington about the Board of Education meeting on Monday night, November the 9th, and talk about the month of November, a busy month with the holidays coming up. And Dr. Pennington, it's our first chance for you to visit with your constituents since the Ponca City School System had their vote and passed the bond issue, but I thought you may just want to, again, talk about that a little bit and how pleased you were with the margin of victory.
Well, you know, obviously, any time you pass a bond issue, even if it's, you know, 60% plus one, you're ecstatic. I think sometimes we forget what a big hurdle that is because our voters, if you look across the state in a given, in any given year, you'll see that a majority of bond issues pass. When I talk to my colleagues across the country and we talk about school stuff, they're always shocked that it takes a 60% majority to fund capital improvements. So when you win with the approval margin that we had on October 13th, 82% for our building bonds, 85% for our transportation bonds, that, you know, you're humbled. It, you know, it takes a lot of people to make this happen. We had a, we had a group of citizens led by Barry Bickel that, that kind of ran the campaign for us, that they organized the ads that people saw, they organized the radio announcements, they raised some funds for us to pay for those things. So, I mean, it was, it was, there were a lot of people involved, a lot of people behind the scenes that made this happen, and we appreciate the work that they did. And now comes the hard part, in that we have to start planning and designing and getting these facilities built. It will be exciting. It'll take longer than any of us want it, want it to take. I think one of the things that people, I know people, we talk about it, but it, I don't think it registers with folks, and that is that until we pass the bond issue, we don't spend any money on facility design. That's just the way the Oklahoma system works, and I think it's probably a flaw in the system. But, you know, it does, you don't want to spend a lot of money designing a building that may not be built. And so, and we don't, and we don't start that till we have money in hand. So, and we, even though we passed the bond issue in October, we originally were not scheduled to actually sell bonds until March and get the money April, May. And again, part of that, part of the reason for the structure of all that is, is the sooner you sell your money, the sooner the taxes go into effect. So obviously, we try to, again, very consistent under that 22 mil levy, we want to make sure we don't affect that. So, passed the bond issue in October, we'll get money in the spring, we'll, then we'll start design. It can take eight to nine months to design, so, you know, we're, we're a couple of years out before we do anything. Now, the Board made a decision last night that's going to help us speed that process up a little bit. And what we're going to do is of the, the first series of bonds, which is, I think, $5.8 million, we're going to break 1.3 million of that out, and we're going to go ahead and sell those bonds the first week of December, which will allow us to get some money in hand so that we can get the design process started. We'll also sell the rest, and we'll sell the rest of the bonds in the spring, and our financial advisor has looked at that, and he believes we can do that and without affecting our tax rate. The other thing that the Board is considering, and they've not taken any action on it yet, but we've had some discussions, and that is issuing, finding an entity to issue us lease revenue bonds. So what that will allow us to do is, so we have the, so we have bond issues, and we have bonds, we're going to sell a bond every year for the next six years. And as into that six-year time period, we will have collected $38 million for construction projects. What lease revenue financing allows us to do, it allows us to borrow against those dollars that we're going to have in the future. So we can go ahead and we can get, for example, we could get $25 million right now, again, so that we can accelerate the design and the construction of projects. So we're going to look at that, that'll probably be a decision we make sometime in the second semester, but, but by doing that, we can get things started and we can get things finished earlier. So maybe, you know, we've kind of looked at some, some plans, and we think that if we do the lease revenue bonds, we can have most of these projects finished before the start of the, of the 2019 school year. So instead of things not being, everything not being done till, you know, 2022, 2023, we can cut four or five years off of that. And some of our projects will be done earlier than that. I mean, we, we've got a schedule that we think that, that most of the improvements to the, to Sullen Stadium can be made by 2018. So, I mean, we're looking at some things we can do, because, you know, the thing that the first question I got after the bond issue passed was, when is everything going to be done? I mean, everybody gets excited about projects, and they want things completed quickly, and, you know, we want things to be done quickly, too. I mean, it's easy, I mean, it's better for us just to get things started and get them done, but, but you all, but you know, there's, there's some issues that are involved, you have to, you want to make sure that you don't rush the design because you don't want mistakes made, and you don't want to rush the construction. And we try to stay local with our construction, we try to use, you know, we use local construction managers, which means that we try to use people who live in Ponca City and have companies in Ponca City, plumbing and electrical and heating and cooling and concrete work and those kinds of things, that we want to use those local folks. And so we also have to be careful that we don't overload them and that we don't put them in a position where they have to hire additional employees, maybe, who aren't as skilled as what they normally work with, and we have problems. So, I mean, it's a fine line to do all this, but we're pretty confident that we can put a schedule out that's going to get all this done pretty quick.
Plus, Dr. Pennington, you do a lot of this work while school is taking place, so you can't disrupt the daily school activity as well.
We want to disrupt as little as possible. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a balancing act, and we've done it a lot over the last few years, so we've gotten good at it. And we haven't done anything like this where we've, you know, gone out, secured additional financing to lump projects together to get them up and out of the ground sooner rather than later. So it'll be a new experience for us, but I think it's something that we can handle and, and our, last night, the Board made the decision to go ahead and hire Lewiston Associates to be the architectural firm for these projects, so that was one hurdle. The next thing we have to do is select our contractors, and I'm, and I'm confident that the Board will go with construction management like we did for the bond issue projects that we're working on right now, and that our local company, Soon and Rick Scott, will be the two companies that they choose. They've been both very easy to work with, they, they're very professional, and I will tell you that it's interesting, you know, when I came here in 2004, one of the first things I tried to get the Board to do was to hire somebody else to be our architect. I didn't know Troy, wasn't familiar, Lewiston Associates was not familiar with their work, but I had worked, the architectural firms I had worked with before were school architecture, that's what they did. Lockright out of Oklahoma City and Boynton and Williams out of Norman were two that I'd experienced with, and those were, and there's some others, but those are probably the two major school construction, school architectural firms in the state of Oklahoma. And they do great work, you know, they're, they have, they're very professional in what they do, they got big staffs. But the Board had worked with Lewiston Associates, and they liked having an architect local, and so they made the decision where we'd stay. And I have to tell you that today, that obviously, I, I, there's lots of benefit to that, and if something were to happen and, you know, I ever located anywhere else, one of the first things I'd want to do is make sure my architect was local. It just saves so many headaches in the construction process to have somebody, you know, three blocks away from your office, that when we need to have meetings, or we need to do things, or a crisis occurs, or a problem shows up, you know, you're going to get immediate attention to that problem. You don't have to wait two weeks for an architect, or 24 hours or 48 hours for an architect to come out of Oklahoma City, or Tulsa, or Norman, to come here, or Dallas in some cases, come to your side, talk to the construction people. I mean, our, our folks are right here together all the time, and so it just makes everything a lot easier. The same thing with our construction managers. The fact that they are local people, I think, helps make, we get a little, I think all, I've worked with lots of construction companies over there, they've all done a good job. But I just have to say, there's a little bit extra, maybe a little TLC that goes into our projects because we lose, use local people, because, you know, they're going to attend athletic events in Robinson Fieldhouse. Their children and grandchildren are going to go, go to and maybe perform at the concert hall, or at the football stadium, or play softball. So that, so that makes a difference. And, and the best thing about it is, is they're competitively priced. We're not, not spending more money than we would otherwise spend by staying with local people. So all those things combined, I think, are positives for this community, and I'm, you know, I'm glad, when I came in here in '04, the Board didn't listen to me on that.
November Board meeting featured a couple of very important reports. The first, the grade card report, the A3F report, I'd like you to go through that for us.
You know, it's not any, not any shock, that stuff's been in the paper before, and, and, you know, we've had this discussion for the last three years in the state, or really the last four years, about the A3F grade card and what it means, and, and, you know, it's a, the idea behind it is, is, is simple, but the thing about, when you try to take a complex issue and make it simple, I don't think you ever get it right. And so what the grade card purports to do is to look at a school and based upon one measure, which is student performance on state assessments, to make an evaluation of a school as to whether or not it is an excellent school, which we would think of as an A, or an F school, which would be a failing school. And so if you look at that report, you'll see that in Ponca City, we had an A school, we had an F school. We had some schools that received a D, some schools that received a C, we had a C minus and a C plus in there, and we had a B. What those, unfortunately, because the instrument we, the test we use is a standardized test, a test that is designed to measure student proficiency, is not designed to evaluate schools or teachers or administrators or communities. Your scores look like traditional standardized test scores. And what standardized test scores are the best predictor of is family income. That's just, you know, that's just the way it is. So before we gave state tests last spring, if you would have given me a spreadsheet, and you would have shown me the percentage of students that qualified for free and reduced lunch in every school in the state of Oklahoma, I could predict what their score is going to be. And it kind of looks that way, it's just the way it is across the state. I mean, it's, you know, it just reinforces what we already know, and that is that, that poverty has a great effect on student performance, especially in early elementary grades. You know, kids who come from homes of poverty, come from homes that are unstable, they have a learning gap, they have a knowledge gap when they come to school. And really, our job is, over the 13 years we have them, 14 if they go to pre-K, is to close that knowledge gap. And so, yes, a test score that a student takes as a third grader is an indicator, but it does, it's not the end of the process, it's the beginning of the process. And so you try to balance that, you try to, you know, make sure that the Board has the big picture, understands the big picture. At the same time, you have to be, you have to recognize the scores for what they are, and that is that a significant number of our students across this district are not proficient in academic subjects. And so we have to continue to look at that, and we have to continue to work and try to improve that. Doesn't mean that those are not good kids, doesn't mean that their parents don't care about them, doesn't mean that their teachers aren't working hard every day, it just means they've got some academic gaps, it's our responsibility to close those gaps, we just haven't quite figured out exactly how to do that. And we are not alone in that. I mean, that's the great challenge in American public education, is how do we close the achievement gap for children who are disadvantaged? That disadvantage can be based upon income, it can be a cultural disadvantage, it can be a racial disadvantage, you know, there are lots of things that, that kind of dictate that this student is going to start at this place when they come to school, this is the amount of background knowledge and information they bring to us, and this child brings this much background information and knowledge. So the question is, as they go throughout that career, how do we close those gaps? Here are some things that, because I, you know, you're, we're always looking at data, trying to figure out what is a true picture of what goes on in our schools. So the other thing we talked about last night is we talked about what we call the college remediation rate. So that is, when our kids go to college, what percentage of those students have to take a remedial class in science, English, math, or reading? We've been doing this for, since the mid-'90s, these reports have been coming out. So the report we had yesterday, which was the report for the class of 2013, so the data is a couple of years old, what it reported was that the class of 2013, that 23% of our students had to take a remedial class in college. Now, you know, again, if you don't live with this stuff every day, you go, wow, 23% of our kids had to take a remedial class. Well, the numbers for the state, the state percentage is 39% of their, of the class of 2013 had to take a remedial class. So we're 16% below the state average. If you look at our peer districts, and those are the other 6, 8, 2 districts in the state, of those 16 schools, we probably had the fourth lowest remediation rate among those schools. Deer Creek Edmond's remediation rate was lower, Bardisville's remediation rate was lower, and Stillwater's remediation rate was lower. And I don't think that when I list those three school districts, anybody's surprised by that. Edmond Deer Creek's one of the wealthiest communities in the state, Stillwater is a college, college town, so they have a significant number of their students who have one or more parents who is employed at a university as a, as a, you know, a college professor, a researcher, but a, but a college degree person of some kind. And we know that what's happened at Bardisville the last 10 years, that, that, you know, a significant number of the research jobs, the engineering jobs, the accounting jobs, the technology jobs that used to live here in Ponca City are now in Bardisville. And so as a result, and so we know, I mean, we know, we know what those kids, we know what parents of, children of those types of parents, we know how well they do in school. So those are not surprising to us. I personally, you know, I looked at that, and, and so I, to me, that says, okay, we're doing some things pretty good. We also, I also looked at, because I was looking at the same, I, to get information off, to compare past years, I had to go to a, we have an Office of Accountability website, and so I went to that, I went to, they put a report out every year, so I went to kind of look at some numbers there. And so a couple of things that, you know, we look at it and then we forget about it. I went back and looked at what was, what percentage of our high school students completed the Regent's College Bound Curriculum for the class of 2014 compared to the class of 2004. And we've had a, a 20% increase in the percentage of students who are completing the Regent's College Bound Curriculum. That's, that's a significant number. I mean, that, and, and when you think about kind of the demographic changes that have taken place in our community and our student body since 2004, you might have expected to see that number drop or stay leveled out. So I, I see that as a positive. The other number that, that I looked at was what percentage of our graduates, again, this is the class of 2013, had at least a 2.0 GPA as a freshman in college. And for the class of 2013, 92% of our students had a GPA of 2.0 as a freshman. That's a 25% increase over the class of 2003. So when we look at, so, so again, you know, we've got these, we've got these scores at the beginning, and so if you look at our, where our Ds and Fs are, they're our elementary sites. As you go up, you know, you see that we get to middle school, we bump up a little bit, we, you know, we're kind of, but maybe drop a little bit at, at, at East, and then at the high school, we've been a C+, C-, we've been in there somewhere, which is not where we want to be. I mean, obviously, we'd rather be an A or a B, I mean, everybody wants the top grade, whatever it is. But if you look at the end result, which is the product that leaves us and goes out into the world, I think we're doing pretty good.
Outstanding. Safety report, and I'm sure this is obviously something that is of keen interest because of all the safety issues and how they're going to be addressed in the future, but what was up in that report?
You know, Brett Smith, who is, who's our operations director, just went through the, with the Board, just basically a report that we have to do every year that talks about, you know, what kind of things, what are we doing with safety? And some of the things that Brett reported out last night is, we talked about the improvements that we've made. The newest improvement is the secure entryway at Woodlands, and the, and that, you know, we're doing the same thing at Trout. We are going to create safe entries at Roosevelt and Liberty this summer. And so then after that, the only school that will not have that secure entrance will be Lincoln, but that will be taken care of with bond projects, that's a bond project. We need to do some updating to the secure entrance at East, the, the materials that are in our, in our glass entryway, and then the way that we have our, where our lobby guard is, and, and we need to move that out into the entryway so that you have to scan your driver's license before you ever get into the office. That's just a little technical kind of thing, we need to do that. Then we talked about things like security cameras and improvements that we're making to cameras and updating we're making to cameras. So it's just a general report of the various things we do that are related to safety. We talked about our drills and how often we do those and those kinds of things. So just kind of an update to the Board to, to make sure that, that they know that safety continues to be a priority for us.
As we kind of do on these shows, kind of leave the last thing as, as your time, and is there anything that is going on in our schools that happened at the meeting, anything that you want to talk about?
You know, I think that, that I just, what I want the community to know is that while, while we don't believe that the grade cards our schools receive are valid, we're very concerned about student performance. And, and we know that we have, that it is our job to teach kids what they need to know, the academic skills they need, so that they have a chance to be successful later on in life. It is, and, and you know, it's, it's a, it's a massive undertaking to do that. And it's frustrating at times because it feels like the goals are always moving and shifting, and how we're being evaluated, or the label people are putting on us is not consistent. What I, what I try to focus on, and what we've tried to focus since I've been here, is this concept that when a student graduates from Ponca City High School, they have the academic skills they need for the post-secondary education of their choice. So if a student wants to go to college, he has the academic skills he needs to go to college. If a student wants to take additional career training, then he has the academic skills to go get that additional career training. If somebody wants to go into the military, they have the academic skills so that whatever that is they want to do in the military, they can pass the ASPAF test, score what they need to score, so if they want to work in electronics, they can do electronics. If they wanted, you know, whatever, because, you know, whatever the military does is a whole lot different than it was when I was growing up. And that's what, that's what this is all, it's all about that big picture. Now, obviously, and I think this is something that we always had to remember, that, that students control a lot of that. I want to go to college, I maybe don't have the academic skills that I need, how hard am I willing to work to get those academic skills? You know, we'll be there for you, we will help you, but I haven't found a way yet that you can, you know, touch a kid with a cell phone or hook them up to an electronic device that all of a sudden puts all kinds of knowledge in their, in their head. So there's a student part of that, there's a family part of that. How stable of an environment are you providing for your child? We can do lots of things at school, but if you're not, if you have a child that's in kindergarten, pre-K, kindergarten, first, second, third, and you're not reading with them every night, then you're not doing your part of the job. If they're fourth grade through 12th grade, are you encouraging them to do homework? Are you, are you, when you give home, when they, when they get together at night, are you having that conversation about what happened in school today and not accepting nothing? Because I promise you, something happened every day. Are you asking them, what are they doing in English? What are you doing in math? What are you doing in history? What are you doing in science? Are you attending parent-teacher conferences so that you can be informed of your child's academic progress? You know? And if you're not, if you're concerned that the school district is not meeting your child's needs, are you letting us know? Are you meeting with the principal and the teacher to have those discussions? Or are you only coming to the school when your child's in trouble and you're trying to defend them for something they did that they should not have done? You know, all that stuff comes together to create a school system and a, and really a, this, a family that is focused on the best for each child. But we can't do it by ourselves. We try to act like this is a vacuum sometimes, and the schools have complete control over whether, and that's just, we have a, we have a significant role to play, but the most significant role to play has always been, and probably always will be played, by families. And then the other thing, Phil, that I just want to talk about and just say that, boy, for those of you that are in the audience that missed the last Wildcat football game, you missed a treat. You know, obviously, if that last field goal attempt by Sepulpa would have been a couple inches higher, you know, we would have left that stadium extremely disappointed. You know, but the important thing is, is that from the first game of the year this year into the last game of the year, our kids played hard. There were multiple opportunities last Friday for a group of young people to say, it's been a long season, hadn't gone very well, let's get this over with, I'm going to go to the house. But we didn't do that. We had multiple opportunities to roll over and quit because of what I consider to be suspect officiating. I understand that your radio broadcast identified that as suspect officiating.
Now, let's talk about that just a little bit. I thought it was, and since you haven't called me into your office, maybe you concur with a little bit of that, too, so. You know, the thing about it is, you take off that superintendent hat, and you're, you're the biggest fan, you are a fan, you and your wife are there, and to see that spirit and, and what happened in a couple of those games this year was, was amazing.
It was amazing, and it was fun to watch, and, and I know that in the world we live in today, that it's all about winning. I mean, it is all about winning. And, and so, you know, if, if our record going into Friday night would have been 6-3 rather than 3- or 2-6, whatever it was, you know, if it had been reversed, we probably would have had a full stadium. And if you look at where our fan base has kind of declined, it's not our, you look at our, our parents and our student body, their numbers are pretty much what they've always been. What we're, what's, what's happened is our casual fan, the person who maybe followed Wildcat football for the last 15 years, 20 years, they're not coming like they used to. And that's disappointing because, again, those, those kids, whether they're your grandchild or not, they're still your neighbor's kid, and they're still a part of the fabric of this community, and they deserve your support. You know, win or lose. Now, if they're not giving effort, if they're, you know... Now, if they're not giving effort, if they're, you know, I mean, you know, I've both seen football teams where you, you know, there's no effort going on. The kids are, there's a personal foul every play because they're, they're not, you know, they're not living up to the ideals of sportsmanship. They're not really competing. They're, they're just, you know, they're just acting inappropriately. I don't blame anybody for not supporting that. But you know, that's not what we've seen the last couple of years. We've seen our kids go out and work hard every, now, had there been some games where, man, you know, they've been overwhelmed? Yeah. You know? But what you, but I think when you look at the teams that are overwhelming them, they've overwhelmed a lot of other teams. We're not the only one that, that they've overwhelmed. You know, I mean, the Bardisville game's a good example. I don't remember what the final score was, but we competed for most of the game on a, we competed with what I think may be, you know, they're going to, I, my, my projection will be that Booker T. Washington and Bardisville will be the two teams in the state finals in our classification. And, you know, I'm not going to surprise me if three of the four teams in our district are the semifinalists in class, in our class. So we've played good football teams. Now, do I wish we were at that level? Yes, I do. But you know what also, but there are so many things that go into that. One part that goes into it is making Wildcat athletics important. It's about people turning out for ballgames and supporting even when things aren't going well. It's about encouraging young people that you know to participate. Kids want to do things that are important to their families and to their community. And that's the same thing. That same thing applies for softball. It applies for basketball. It applies for wrestling. It applies to orchestra and band. Kids do those things. Do they do them? Does, does a student participate in orchestra because they like music and the, and yes, they do, absolutely. But nothing means more to those young people than when they give an orchestra performance, to have an auditorium full of not only family and friends, but also just community members. And so, you know, I just want to encourage people, you know, we're coming up on winter sports and I know there are going to be some nights that it's going to be cold and you don't want to get out of the house and go to a ballgame, but I'm just going to encourage you to do that. You know, come out and support our students. That, what I know is this, is they go out and play the best they can every night. Sometimes they're not the best team. They're just not. But, you know, they're ours. And this is not college football. We're not going to go out and recruit anybody different. It's not the NFL. We don't get to draft our players. You know, we have, we play with the kids that we have and I think that they deserve our support. Now, again, there's always things that happen. You've got other commitments. I understand we live in a busy world. That happens to me sometimes. I don't get to go to as many games as I want to because of other obligations that I have. But again, you know, come out and watch our kids. They, they work hard. And I tell you, we missed, you've missed, if you didn't watch Po-Hi football this year, you missed a treat with the Larson kid. I mean, we've had two really exceptional quarterbacks around here in the last five years. The Wilson kid who is at Emporia State right now was such a, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we'll ever see a better quarterback in a Wildcat uniform. Anybody that'll throw the football any better than he did. And I don't want you to ever see a better runner than Larson. I mean, I just thought he was exceptional all year long.
They didn't win a lot of games, but they were great players. And you're exactly right. Appreciate your time, Dr. Pennington. That is going to do it for the November Board wrap-up show. Have a great holiday.